Good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren Lind. I'm the Planning and Zoning Director for the Town of Cohasset. This is the May 25th Planning Board meeting for the Town of Cohasset. I've been asked to start this because this is the first meeting that we're having after the annual town election. We did have some changeover of membership. We did, um, we lost one full member actually to the Select Board. Paul Grady has, uh, has been elected to serve on the Select Board, cannot serve both concurrently, so he has officially resigned from the Planning Board. We do have, um, and we'll get more into this at member comments, but we have one, uh, unfulfilled term that we will be looking for applicant, people who are interested in being appointed. So we'll go more into the details later. We also have one new, uh, voted in member, Deirdre Hobson, welcome to the Planning Board. She's a full member. And we'll also be joined shortly. Thank you. Uh, we also will be joined shortly by, uh, Kevin Heine, who is our new associate member who has been elected to the Planning Board. So, uh, without further ado, I'm going to officially call this meeting to order. It's 6:33 PM. This is the CrossFit Planning Board. We're going to start by a roll call vote. I will call your name and if you could just say, President, Tom Callahan.
President.
Amy Glassmeyer.
President.
Clark Brewer.
President.
Deirdre Hobson.
President.
And then, like I mentioned, we're waiting on Kevin Heine. He's not here yet, but we'll announce him when he's here. The first order of business, as is typical business after the annual town election, is the annual Planning Board post-election reorganization. We will be, uh, looking for the board to vote in a, to elect a Chair, Vice Chair and Clerk. So I'm going to turn it over to the members to see if anybody has any slate of candidates they'd like to propose. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to all of you.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Tom about, um, he, uh, giving him a shot at, uh, chairing the, the, the Planning Board for the next year. Uh, I did it for four or five years. Um, Amy's done it for the last two. Uh, and since Tom has run meetings for the Select Board and I think the Conservation Commission, um, he, he certainly has the, um, experience to do it. Um, um, obviously, um, where we would be here to support, um, whatever he needs to get done. And, uh, so, so I officially nominate Tom Callahan as Chairman of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Clark.
Is it possible to amend a nomination?
Thank you.
No, I think either he gets seconded. If it doesn't get seconded, then
I second the nomination.
Then we vote on it. Okay. So now we would take a, take a vote and I think Lauren would ask, ask us to do that.
Yes. So we have a motion in a second to appoint Tom Callahan as Chair of the Planning Board. We'll take a roll call vote. Tom Callahan.
Hi.
Amy Glassmeyer.
Hi.
Clark Brewer.
Hi.
Deirdre Hobson.
Hi.
All right, that's unanimous. Tom Callahan, congratulations. You've been appointed as Chair. Would you like to take over the meeting now?
Thank you. I don't know. You seem to be enjoying it.
No, you can, you're officially the chairman.
You're officially the chair now.
Through the other positions.
Now, and, and, uh, I just want to remark, my daughter just brought me a frap. So good for her, along with the dog brought me a frap. So, um, anyway, so all right, next is the position of Vice Chair. Um, I will open the floor to nominations.
I'd like to make a dual nomination. Uh, I'd like to nominate myself as the Vice Chair and Clark Brewer as the Clerk.
Yeah, I'm not interested in serving as Clerk, but I, I, I would, um, I could serve as Vice Chairman. I mean, I, I would imagine Tom wouldn't miss a single meeting. Um, but in the event that he did or was sick.
With one of you, with one of you two in charge? No, I'm not gonna, I'm kidding. I'm kidding, but, uh, all right, um, I noticed that the Select Board last night, they had competing, uh, nominees make a statement. I don't know if either one of you want to, but, uh, certainly I know enough, it might be for Deirdre's benefit, uh, and Kevin, welcome, um, show your face. But Kevin, welcome to the, uh, meeting and welcome to the Planning Board.
Well, it's, it, now that, uh, Kevin's here and he's the Associate Member with a regular member missing, um, you as the Chairman can ask him to vote.
Yeah, if, if Kevin is comfortable doing so, if everybody, nobody else objects to that, uh, certainly we don't, you know, our usual practice is to let the Associate Member participate in as much as the Associate Member is allowed to, so. Um, Kevin, you, uh, you're here, you're, you've cast a vote for Vice Chair. We have two nominations at the moment. Um, they haven't been seconded, so, uh, anybody want to second the nominations?
I'll second it.
Second who's?
Amy.
Okay. All right. Um, and I'll, I'll second Clark's just so we have a vote. So, um, and either one of you want to say anything, you're certainly free to do so.
Everyone, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi, uh, thanks for, uh, welcoming me onto the, uh, Board. I don't seem to have my settings quite set up, so to provide the video, but I'll work through that, but I just wanted to make sure you can, uh, you can hear me.
Okay.
So I'll make a very brief statement, which is as the former Chair, I am, um, knowledgeable about the issues that are before us today. I also have a perspective, having served, uh, watching how our, uh, Board has evolved and also the kinds of issues that we're going to be facing in the next, uh, term. Therefore, I feel as if I can, if necessary, I don't expect Tom to miss a meeting, same as Clark. Uh, I feel I could step in and serve as a dutiful Vice Chair, um, if it had to be.
Sure. And I'll just, uh, make a brief statement. So I was Chairman of the Planning Board for five years, um, two years ago. Um, as well as Chairman of the Master Plan Committee that, um, extended from 2015 to 2019. Um, and, uh, I was Vice Chairman of the Original Master Plan Committee about 18 years ago. Uh, and I've served on boards and committees, uh, off and on for the last, um, I guess 30 years, not, uh, even prior to being in Cohasset. Um, so having, having, um, having run hundreds of, of, of meetings, uh, I could certainly run the one or two over the next year that, uh, Tom, uh, might be tied up on.
Okay. All right. Um, well, I guess we'll just directly move to a vote. Uh, we have two candidates. Just vote for who you're going to vote. I'll, I'll, I'll start with Amy.
Uh, Amy Glassmeyer votes for Amy Glassmeyer.
And Clark.
Um, I, I guess I vote for myself.
You're allowed.
Clark Brewer.
You're allowed, Deirdre.
Vote for Amy Glassmeyer.
Kevin. Hello, Kevin. Kevin, are you there?
He might be working on his, um.
All right. So I think, Tom, if you cast a vote, then, uh, it would be, uh,
Yeah, I, I, you know, and I, I, I honest to God don't want to be in this position, but I, I'm going to cast my vote for Amy.
Thank you.
Uh, so next we have nominations for Clerk for, Clark doesn't want to be the Clerk, so it's going to fall to you, Deirdre, by default, if you wish, but as far as the Clerk. All right, well, I, the Clerk, by the way, we, we, we have somebody on staff here. Uh, I just want to check if she's here tonight. Angela, Angela is with us today. Yes, she is.
Yes.
Angela's with us. I mean, Lauren handles the agenda and handles minutes and occasionally, what the Clerk does normally is read the public notices. Uh, tonight, I asked Lauren to do that because I knew we'd have somebody new in the position, but, um, it's not the most essential role on the Board, but you know, if, if somebody wants to, uh, step up to do it, uh, you know, once we have a, our full complement of full members, maybe we revisit it, uh, but, um, at the moment, Deirdre, you're the only full member left. So if you do not wish to have it, we'll just go without it and bring it up again when we have a full complement.
I mean, I, I explained to both, um, Lauren and Amy, I'm still, I'm very happy to be on the Board and really want to be involved. Um, but I need some time to get my feet wet. And in addition to that, um, I'm still dealing with finalizing my parents' estate, which takes me back and forth to Maine, six hours away. Uh, right now, for the next month or so. So I just, I just know people, want people to understand that.
I respect that. Certainly, um, there is a learning curve with the Planning Board. There's a lot of detailed things in terms of votes and the numbers of types of issues that we, we deal with, so, okay. That's fine.
That's fine. And, and like I said, it's not the end of the world that we don't have a Clerk unless we're statutorily required to do so. We'll figure it out, but.
We can have Lauren, you or the, uh, Vice Chair read the, the notices. So I don't think that there's a, a critical issue.
Yeah, I, and I don't, I don't like reading the little print on the small screen. So Lauren's got a full, it's full-sized copy sitting on her desk there. So she's nominated tonight. We talked about this before. So, okay, so, all right, without further ado, then thank you all for your confidence in me. And, uh, we'll move forward right into our agenda.
Tom, could, could I just raise one thing, which is, could you, could you speak to the, uh, decorum of the Board from the standpoint of persons having their face present and their ability to speak so that, that, that in the Zoom world, those are a couple of the requirements that we have. Isn't that correct?
You mean in terms of our Board members?
Well, you know, in terms of the law, that the way in which a Zoom meeting has to be, um, comported is that all persons who will be voting show their face and also are, can be heard. Is that correct?
Carolyn, is that the exact?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, just so everybody knows.
So, yeah, so for the new members, you know, and believe me, in the last, uh, two years since we've been doing Zoom and I've been on the Board, we've all had technological glitches from one moment to the next, but, uh, especially I see Kevin's in a car. So, uh, we, we, our former Associate Member often attended meetings while driving, so, um, I, I hope you, you stay in coverage for us. So, all right, with respect to our agenda tonight, we have a number of items, but I, uh, there are two items that are going to be, uh, postponed. So I'd like to just take those out of the order and get them out of the way. Uh, that is with respect to 46 Border Street, the Wharf Project and 90 Howard Gleason Road. Um, in connection with 46 Border, the applicants asked for continuance. They asked for June 8th. We moved our meeting from June 8th, so they're going to be on June 22nd. So we'd need a motion to continue that hearing until, uh, June 22nd at 6:30. Somebody.
I made the motion to move, to, uh, move that we continue 46 Gleason and one comment, Tom.
Forty-six.
Forty-six, forty-four.
Forty-six.
Forty-six border.
Sorry. Forty-six Border Street. Um, and I just want to say one thing, Tom, as you're going through it, it'd be really helpful probably for our two new members. If when you use the terms that we use in what we're doing, that, that it's clear to them what it is you're trying to execute. Why are we doing this now?
Okay, I, 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 my, uh, the, we, we open public hearings for certain permits. And the, the public will benefit from this too. Um, anytime a continuance of that hearing happens, it has to be voted to a new date and time certain. In this case, the applicant requested it. Sometimes during the meetings, we're going back and forth. You may see that tonight with the hearings that we actually have tonight, that we do it by agreement to continue it because we just are not going to finish all the business in one night. So the Wharf Project at Atlantica has been before us once. We opened a public hearing on that. So we're in the middle of a public hearing process. They've asked to move it. It will be January 22 at 6:30, and so we have to have a formal motion to continue it to that date and time. So.
Motion's due late. I'll make a second.
Clark, Clark has made it. Amy's made it. It's, it's first and seconded, so, um, I will take a roll call vote on that. Clark Brewer.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye. Amy.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Deirdre Hobson, aye.
Okay, Deirdre and Kevin.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Okay. Um, for the new members, um, we usually do the votes in alphabetical order. Uh, when we take comments at public hearings, which you will see coming up, we also do that in alphabetical order. My new thing to mix it up is so that everybody has the chance of being the first word and the first commenter is that we're going to rotate through the alphabetical order so that everybody gets a shot at being the first commenter. Because people at the end of the alphabet often get nothing to say because it's all been said, so.
That sounds good.
But for votes itself, I'm going to go in the strict alphabetical order, which at the moment is Clark, me, Amy, Kevin, Deirdre. All right, so, um, that's that. Thank you. Uh, on 90 Howard Gleason, because of the quirk of the election, we no longer have a quorum for the special permit. This is a particular, for the new guys, this is a particular type of permit we do, and there's a very strict requirement on a quorum. We need to have four members. Um, we cannot use you newly elected people as members for this. And we do not meet the one exception for, um, the quorum requirement. So unfortunately, we have to start all over. I apologize to the applicant for that, but this is just a quirk of what happened with the election. So, um, a new public hearing will be started. I guess that's also being scheduled for January 22nd, uh, June 22nd. I don't think we need a motion about that, but that's the reason why that matter is being taken off the agenda for tonight. All right, then. So the next item we have for tonight is, um, 20, what is it? 26 Lambritz Lane. And this is a new, uh, approval not required hearing. And for the benefit of the new members, um, in addition to our work with the zoning bylaw, we also are the Board that manages the State Subdivision Control Law in Massachusetts uh, on the local level. And one of the processes beyond a full subdivision is a process called approval not required. Um, Carolyn, you correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the issue of approval not required is that people are trying to divide one lot into multiple lots. And they all have to have, the sole criteria for us to decide is if they have frontage on an adequate way. So, um, we have seen 26 Lambert's Lane before in other iterations. Um, this is a new, maybe this is, correct me if I'm wrong, in our application. Uh, so, uh, without further ado, we'll get into it. Um, I'm sure the property owner and his representative are here. You want to promote them?
Yes, I'm going to promote. Alton Stone is here, um, behalf of the applicant. We also have William Eads, an attorney representing the applicant. William, if you're, you're going to see a, a notification that I'd like you to rejoin as a panelist, if you could accept that.
And there, there's no public hearing notice to, uh, read, read for this one, but, uh.
We have Adam Brodsky here to represent the applicant as well. They're the same firm as William Eads.
Yes, uh, this is William. Hi, Lauren. Adam is, uh, going to be the one attending today. So can you push me back down?
Oh, sure. Thank you. And then Adam, please let me know if there's anyone else that should be here to speak to this.
Okay. Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm an environmental land use attorney representing the applicant, John Orman. Mr. Orman should also be in the waiting room, as well as our professional land surveyor, Rod Frandino, Rodrick Frandino. Thank you. Chair Callahan, may I proceed?
Yes, please do, Mr. Brodsky.
Uh, thank you. Uh, we are seeking endorsement of our proposed A and R plan under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81P. And as the Chair has alluded to, we have two requirements. Uh, one, to show that we are not proposing a subdivision. And second, to demonstrate that each lot has the required frontage on a qualified way. And in this instance, we are, uh, frontaged on a public way. And I'll, I'll be brief because as you may know, uh, an A and R plan, an approval or an A or excuse me, the endorsement of an A and R plan is really a ministerial function. But we were asked to specifically brief four issues for the Planning Board, which were reflected in my letter of April 27, or I should say, actually Attorney E's letter of April 27, 2022.
May I interrupt, may I interrupt you for a moment, Adam, for the benefit of our new members? Um, did, did, did the new members see the letter from Attorney Brodsky? Deirdre and Kevin, have you seen? No, okay. I mean, just quick, quick background. This is not the first time we've seen this application. And basically the issue was the issue of frontage on Lambert's Lane and where the layout of Lambert's Lane are. And Mr. Brodsky has given us a very, uh, an 84-page missive on the subject. And if you could summarize it, that would be great, Adam. Don't go, don't go over all eight four pages.
Uh, excuse me, Tom, I just wanted to make, for the new members, um, I always, uh, click on the Planning Board, um, web, website because there's active applications. Um, and, and then all, all the documents that are relevant to, to our specific hearings are there. For example, this letter, this letter is, um, it, you know, it's in the, in the second thing. And, um, Deirdre, you're shaking your head like, yeah, you did it. You knew that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's there. Um, Adam, do you want to put up the plan while you're explaining this? That might, that might help our new members and the public who's watching, so.
Thank you. I, I don't know whether, uh, Rod, um, has the ability to pull up the plan. I can find it. I'm operating from a new laptop, so I'm a little bit behind on the technology.
Right, well, I, I apologize. I apologize to interrupting. If you could go forward, let's, let's go forward.
Well, thank you. Or I don't know whether Ms. Lynn has the ability to bring up the proposed A and R plan also, but I, uh.
I'll speak to that regrettably. I'm, sorry, Mr. Brodsky, we, I don't have the ability to share on behalf of the applicant, but I do, uh, enabled screen sharing if Rod or Alton is able to.
Okay. Well, well, thank you. Perhaps let me just lay out the issues very quickly and then, uh, uh, Rod, uh, will hopefully be able to share a screen and bring up the plan and just describe what we're proposing. I, I do want to be clear that, um, this is a new filing. I have not been involved in any of the past filings. I'm not even familiar except generally with respect to that. Um, so the only issue before the Planning Board this evening is endorsement of the proposed plan. And, and as, as Chair Callahan, uh, mentioned, uh, we were asked to address four specific issues in connection with this filing. Um, while my package was 84 pages, I think my, our, our letter was shorter, but there are a number of attachments to it. And, and first, um, we, we provided the Planning Board with evidence that Lambert's Lane is in fact a public way under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81L. Uh, we provided to the Board a title report by Daniel Bartlett, our title examiner, who has determined that the public way has in fact been used as a public way since as early as 1670. But more importantly, the town clerk on several occasions has certified Lambert's Way as a public way. And, and so we're proposing a, again, uh, lots on a public way. Um, second, uh, we were asked to address the question of, of Lambert's Lane in proximity to the right of way. And in fact, this property butts the right of way and along its entire length. Uh, Attorney Bartlett, uh, provided a chain of title and in fact ran the deeds all the way back. And, uh, um, thank you. Thank you, Rod. I appreciate you doing that. And, and you'll note that the property, including all of the four lots, uh, butts the right of way and has done so since at least 1907. Um, we also provide you information with, uh, respect to the deeds. Uh, and all of the deeds are, demonstrate that the lots are bounded by what was called Bread and Cheese Tree Lane. That's what was, uh, uh, Lambert's Lane was formerly called Bread and Cheese Lane. At some point, it was changed to Lambert's Lane. Um, but all of the deeds are bounded on the right of way and are bounded on a particular right of way called Lambert's Lane since 1925. Uh, we were asked to brief the issue of whether each of the lots has sufficient frontage to comply with the Cohasset zoning bylaw. And, and what I just need to remind the Board of and, uh, the, you know, the longstanding members understand this. Um, that frontage is defined in the Cohasset zoning bylaws as the line dividing the lot from the right of way as opposed to the street. And so we have the bounds of Lambert Lane shown on the plan. They are called out. I do want to point out that the actual, uh, developed portion of Lambert's Lane, the actual street, the road, um, generally falls within the right of way, but in some locations, um, uh, is not located within the right of way. But whenever we talk about frontage, the measurements are always from the right of way and not the paved portion of the street. Uh, this is not unusual in Cohasset. It's not unusual in any town. Uh, most people are aware that, um, they generally, the town doesn't generally pave the entirety of the way, only a portion of the way. And, but in this instance, and I think, uh, Rod's demonstrating with his cursor, each of the proposed lots have more than the minimum required frontage within the zoning district, which is 50 feet on the right of way. Uh, the last issue that we're asked to, uh, brief, uh, which again was alluded to by Chair Callahan, is that we need to demonstrate that access to the lots from the way, not necessarily the street, from the way, is not illusory. And in this case, there's no evidence whatsoever to suggest that, uh, access is illu- illusory, that you essentially can't step off of the way onto each of the lots. In fact, the property to the, uh, northeast, if I have my directions correctly, um, 34 Lambert's Lane is similarly situated uh, and has access over the right of way, not necessarily the street. Um, there are no issues with, for example, wetlands on the boundaries, the southern boundaries of this property, uh, abutting the right of way. There are no physical, um, pedestals such as guardrails. Um, in fact, when I visited the site, I walked from the way onto each of the lots and we provided photographs that demonstrated. So a, again, uh, and, and Rod can just take you through the specifics as to the frontage for each of the lots, um, the requisite lot area, but we've demonstrated that, one, uh, this is not a subdivision. And two, that each of the lots, uh, has adequate frontage, uh, more than what's required under the Cohasset zoning bylaw and is there not, therefore not illusory. And accordingly, uh, we're entitled to an endorsement of the A and R plan. I, I should note that there'll be additional permitting necessary to develop these lots. Um, you know, I know that there's been discussion and, uh, at one point a common driveway was, uh, proposed. And so, uh, uh, we will likely be coming back to the Planning Board for approval of a common driveway. And again, there are wetlands, uh, in proximity, uh, to, uh, some of these lots. Uh, you'll note on the plan, Turkey Hillbrook, uh, which is a, uh, waterway from which there's a, uh, appropriate setbacks that we'll have to address. So that's an issue for the Conservation Commission. But all that's being presented this evening is a request for endorsement of the A and R because this meets the requirements of 81P. And so, Rod, I, I don't know whether you want to just quickly go through the plan and just identify each of the lots and show the requisite frontage on the way, please.
Okay, um, any questions? I mean, it's, the plan is self-explanatory. Um, it fronts. The plan has not changed. Uh, because the work was performed satisfactory at the initial meeting, but we needed legal explanation as to its frontage. As far as the math goes, uh, there you go. 51, 50 feet. We have, you know, the rest and, um, 50 foot is the required frontage and we hold that. And we're going to hold that to the face of the house where we place the house. Uh, with Lot 3, the house will be in the front. And the other lots, it's 50 feet clear to the back.
All right. Thank, thank you, Rod. I, I, we did make some proposed changes to the plan just so that you could, we could better explain what were proposed. I think the prior version, again, it's not necessarily relevant, uh, but we made sure that we provided the bounds of the way. Um, obviously identified the street within the way. Uh, and we provided the required information that satisfies your checklist for, uh, approval not required plans. So with, with that said, we're happy to answer any questions and, uh, thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Brodsky, I have a question.
Amy, 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 whoa, whoa, whoa.
Sorry.
Um, I was going to go in in order, but it's, it's, it's pressing.
Go right ahead.
All right. Um, well, let me, uh, you know, in a lot of cases, we'll have our peer review. All right. Um, well, let me, uh, you know, in a lot of cases, we'll have our peer review before board comments. So, um, let me ask Carolyn. Um, I understand you've been asked to, uh, look at the legalities of this about the issue of frontage. Uh, for, for the benefit of the public as well as our, um, new members, Lambert's Lane, yes, may be accepted by the town as a public way, but there's no plan that anybody's aware of, of its actual layout and where it is. Um, but, um, so that's been one of the troubling things about this. And, and Attorney Brodsky is correct that where the layout of a way is, doesn't necessarily match up with the pavement. But Carolyn, on the issue of whether there is frontage on Lambert's Lane, I understand you have an opinion on that to offer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I, I went through the, uh, submission that Attorney Brodsky's colleagues submitted and, um, also went through all of the deeds with my colleague, Sharon Everett. We agree that, um, these lots shown on this plan, um, do, um, abut, run along, are bounded by, um, Lambert's Lane so that they do have frontage. And as you just noted, Mr. Chairman, um, even though this plan still shows a little bit of a gap between the blue boundary line of the lot and the paved surface of Lambert's Lane, as best as we could, yeah, it, it is speculation, but the fact that there is no, um, official layout planned for Lambert's Lane on record, all we can guess is that the reason for that gap between pavement and the property line is because it is most likely that that is the full layout or the extent of the layout of Lambert's Lane. Um, but I'm satisfied that these lots have demonstrated frontage on the way.
Thank you, thank you. Um, all right, for board comment, again, I'm gonna start my rotation, but we'll start with the traditional rotation. Mr. Brewer, you're first.
Yeah, um, uh, the applicant came before the board for A and R endorsement, uh, a month or so ago. And at the time, I re- recall, the, the reason was because, uh, the paved part, part of uh, Lambert's Lane, um, went across the, uh, property line onto, onto the private property. We understand the reason for that is, uh, when it was originally paved, there was a, a vague idea where property lines were and a big boulder on the, on the, uh, the lower side of the, of the, of the drawing, yeah, somewhere in there. Um, but it with, if it's a public way and then there's public access that, that's going across pub, a pub, private property, uh, it seems like that there's, there should be an easement or there should be a land swap and a, a taking and, uh, providing of, of, um, uh, property to the, to the parcel so that the, the use of the, the public way is in, e- entirely, um, um, in under public ownership and not private ownership. Now, there may be a lot of examples of this and I guess I, I defer to councils, um, um, understanding about this because it can't be the first time that this has happened. Um, so the, so the question is, if there's no, um, easement to the town of Cohasset and this is, uh, a, a road that's on private way, on, on, on private property, a public access on private property, is there a prescriptive easement that's in place that would be twenty years old? Then we, nobody has to worry about this. We just focus on frontage and, and, and access? Uh, or is this a defect in the, in the parcel that needs to be, uh, resolved before, uh, it gets endorsement?
Um, the three, Mr. Sharon, um, I, I see this as the fact that we have got this ancient way that goes back quite some time. And the fact that we don't have, it never went through the official laying out process with a plan and defined meets and bounds. Um, but the fact that we've had two town clerks certify that this is open and for use as a public way, um, we take on it and it's on its face value that, um, the public has acquired, you know, a prescriptive rights in this way.
So that in the future, the, uh, private property owner could not interfere with, uh, access in one direction or the other along this public way, even though it's on their property. So you, you're saying there are prescriptive rights that the town now has across this private property? And.
I, I believe so, yes.
If they were ever challenged that, that they wouldn't hold up.
Okay, in, in, in a perfect world, when there's prescriptive of adverse rights, you have them established in a court, so it's very clear. Um, you know, those, those of us who are veterans here know that the A and R is not determining issues of buildability and some of these other issues, but I, I would suggest to the applicant, we do clean this up officially with some written easement documents, uh, rather than have to go through a court process, but, um. All right, um, next, uh, um. I'll skip myself, although normally I wouldn't, like, because I know Amy had her hand up. So Amy, uh, any comments? I assume you're finished, Clark, with your comments.
I am.
Okay, Amy.
Uh, thank you. I just would like to ask, uh, Mr. Brodsky, what district this property is in? And this is for the purposes of the new, um, members of the board so that they understand that there are three zones within Cohasset that have specific requirements that allow you to achieve buildability. So if, um, this can be described, so I would appreciate it if, um, for the purposes of explanation, if Mr. Brodsky would explain to our new members what this means.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Glassmire, Vice Chair Glassmire. This property, these lots are located within the residential A district. Each of the lots is required to have a minimum lot area of eighteen thousand square feet and fifty feet of frontage. And those are noted on the A and R plan.
Thank you. So every time we get a picture like this, this is one of the key ingredients that you look at to know where you are and to know what kinds of issues might arise.
Um, anything else, Amy?
No, thank you.
Okay, uh, Kevin, do you have any questions, comments?
I, I do.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to ask the applicant, and I can't see from what's posted on here of this plan where we're referencing distances and measurements and, um, frontage. Um, if this is a, um, plan that's been sealed by either a professionally licensed engineer in the Commonwealth or a registered land surveyor, so we have some confidence that the measurements shown on such plan are accurate.
Mr. Hand, yes, the plan has been signed by a registered professional land surveyor, uh, Mr. Fran Dino, and that, uh, certification appears on the A and R plan.
Okay, I see that now. Thank you.
Anything else, Kevin? Kevin, anything else?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, Deirdre. You're, you're muted, Deirdre.
Unmute. There we go.
Get the hang of it.
All right. I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, as far as myself, um, I, I read Mr. Brodsky's, uh, memo. I agree that the deed descriptions describe the southern boundaries. I, I think it's the southern boundary of all these properties as being, uh, bounded by Lambert's Lane. So, um, despite the uniqueness of Lambert's Lane and its history and its development, I'm satisfied that they bound on the lane. My only question is, um, in, in the area where Lot Thirty-four comes down to this, near the brook. Um, you know, one of the questions, and Adam, I know you later addressed this, was that the area between the pavement of Lambert's Lane and the southern boundary of Lot Three and Four, there was speculation whether that was part of Lot Thirty-four, um, and not Lambert's Lane. If I'm, if I remember correctly, Lot Thirty-four's description just says also southerly by Lambert's Lane or Bread and Cheese Lane, whatever it was, it doesn't give it any measurements. And are we sure there's not like a triangle here that might belong to Thirty-four? And Carolyn, I don't know if your office had that same question, but there, none of these descriptions gave meets and bounds and measurements of feet, uh, of what these boundaries were. They just said southerly by Bread and Cheese Lane. And, um, I, I, that was the question the first time. I just want to make sure everybody's satisfied to that. I, you know, I asked the question about it. Adam, I'll let you comment and Carolyn, uh, yourself, please.
But neither Dan Bartlett or Title Attorney or, uh, Mr. Fran Dino has, has identified some un, unsurveyed triangle of property. And I'm, I'm happy to defer to Rod to confirm that. So, you know, this is a survey based upon the deeds that you, uh, have had an opportunity to review. So, uh, all I can tell you is that both our title examiner and our land surveyor have confirmed the southern boundaries of our property.
Uh, that's correct. Um, as far as an unsurveyed parcel, uh, Francesco's piece here, um, has a distance-bound survey from way back, uh, maybe in the fifties, um, it was called Burr Meadow. I circumvented that whole lot. In fact, I surveyed Francesco's piece all the way around and they did a good job because these, this is Francesco's boundary and without the bearings and the distances fit here, an old drill hole found. And I then came over here and found other, if you were to go this way in a plan, you'd see other drill holes. So, and Francesco's parcel is, is situated as it was initially laid out. There's old stone walls. And so someone said, um, the pavement was laid out, uh, without knowledge of the bounds of the, of abutting owners, as is not unusual. And, uh, so what you have here is public way and and this is indeed frontage. Uh, I would say, um, that this landowner here, um, he's, and he knows what, I have pinned this and he knows, and he agrees. He did not object to this. He, he had a feeling this is the way it was, uh, so he's in agreement with our survey. And, um, you have it. It's just an unusual configuration. But there is no other private party between Ormond and the public here.
Okay. Carolyn, your, your firm's conclusions, I take it, were the same?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, based on the deeds description, same thing, we read the same thing you did, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, the, the southerly or the southeastern, I guess, of these lots' boundaries were just by or along the way. No mention of, um, you know, there being an intervening parcel there.
This, this doesn't always happen, but a lot of times with old properties, it does. It's just these indefinite things that we wouldn't stand for today. All right, my, my other question, though, is about the illusoriness of the access. Um, a common driveway is, or has been in the past, proposed for this. And on lots Three and Four, um, trying to recall, there was out there a few weeks ago, wasn't, isn't there like a substantial rise or cliff or a piece of ledge there? Um, A- Adam will know there's cases about, you know, whether illusory is actual access can be achieved. And I suppose, but is, are, are there any ge- any geographical features along the boundaries of, uh, Lots Three and Four that would prohibit actual access?
Mr. Chair, the, the lots, topography does slope upwards and there are some rock formations. Um, but a- again, I'll, I'll defer to, to Rod Frandino. None of those rock formations would preclude access. Again, I, I literally can walk off of the way onto each of these lots and walk into the uplands. Um, if ultimately, you know, driveways needed to be constructed to get to building sites, um, uh, that's not what's being proposed. Again, we, we need to come back in and, uh, once we have the end of pla- uh, plan endorsed, you know, go forward with a development proposal. Uh, but I'm not aware of any physical impediment such as a wetland extending across the entirety of the frontage or there's that somewhat famous or infamous case dealing with a town guard rail that precludes any access onto any of these lots from the northern limit of the way. And Rod, I don't know whether you have any, any additional observations.
Yeah, I, I realize that the board, um, assesses access as is and not proposed. Um, this would be the lot and we have a ledge in here. I did a complete topography here. Uh, there is a driveway that could be constructed through here um, based on topography, uh, not without, you know, um, construction, but, um, it's not an impediment. There's no wall, uh, that prohibits, um, a drive through here. The ledge is up in here, uh, the steep part. And, um, so how Mr. Orman goes forward with accessing, um, from above or from below, I'm not sure, but either way, we have access to, one questionable lot, I would say, would be this one because of a, um, a flatted area below the ledge, which I'm looking at here.
And, and, and again, Mr. Chairman, um, all we're doing is presenting the A and R.
Um, I, I understand what you're doing, but illusory access is one of the issues and there can be physical impediments to that access, as you know, in some of the cases. So, um, does, does anybody else on the board have any thoughts or concerns about this particular issue? Or am I just, is it just me asking the question?
Tom, I had another question, if I might ask.
Yes, Kevin, go right ahead.
Um, it, it sounds like, um, there's been, um, physical walking of these areas and work done and surveying done. Is there any evidence of encroachment by any of the property owners or butters to the existing property owners that would perhaps call into question, um, the measurements that are shown, uh, with regard to, shown on this plan that may be, um, subject to a claim of adverse possession or anything like that, where they would actually be different than what they're showing on the plan?
We're.
Mr. Chair, this is Adam Brodsky. I'm, I'm not, again, I, I, I'm not certain I understand the question.
I understand that the, the question Kevin's asking, is there any possibility of adverse possession that would alter these property lines? Um, Kevin, for the A and R, I mean, I made clear to you and Deirdre and anybody else in the public, the A and R is not a question of buildability and there are some other issues that these lots present with respect to that, in my opinion. The real issue is about the frontage. So if there was any potential of an adverse claim that it would affect our decisions here, it would have to be along the frontage. In other places of the property, uh, that may be an issue of buildability later in terms of it decreases lot area, decreases lot width, something of that nature, but that's not what's before us. The A and R process, again, is, is, is very limited in what our, our scope of inquiry.
So I'll just, if I may, Tom, I'll just frame my question with regard to, from the frontage perspective, from the frontage on Lambert's Lane, is there any indication that these property boundaries or the frontage that's shown on this drawing is different from what's shown on the drawing from what the reality is? For instance, I'll just put this as an example. If someone had a wall that they installed or a fence that they installed that would call into question a distance shown on this, is there something out there that maybe isn't shown on the map, but people that have been on Lambert's Lane, look at the frontage, look at the lay of the land and understand it, would call into question, hey, that frontage is supposed to be this amount, but I'm seeing something else here that doesn't make sense with that? That's the question to the applicants I've made.
So, Adam, you understand that question, I think?
Yes, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, we're not aware of any claims to any adverse possession which would affect the calculation of frontage a- along the right of way.
Also, by law, if I don't show encroachment, I'm liable. And so I can attest to that also.
Um, yeah, just to add to the, to the question, I think Kevin's, Kevin's point would be that there is an encroachment. It's the public way. And on, on the other hand, if you move the property line to the traveled way of, um, Lambert's Lane, the actual paved area, you, you'd actually. Um Lambert's Lane, the actual paved area, you you'd actually increase the um amount of frontage instead of decrease it below the fifty feet. Um. Yeah, I I I just want to throw in another uh uh comment on 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 the issue of this um. Traveled way being on private property. I I I I'd be in favor of endorsing this if the applicant was willing to change the plan. To um outline the area of the traveled way. Um with distances and angles. Uh and provide an easement to or or provide the property to the town of Cohasset. I I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on this with with a a potential access easement problem, even if. Council has said there's a prescriptive easement in place. I think it'd be easier for the applicant to to just change the plan and show the traveled way. Um and that would increase his amount of frontage anyway.
So this is Adam Brodsky. I mean, that's a complicated question when you're dealing with easements and towns. And acceptance of easements and whatnot. Um it's not necessary for purposes of this exercise. Uh which is that, and I I agree with town council, is that the town likely has a prescriptive easement over that portion. Of lot number one, by virtue of public use over these many years. Uh it doesn't relieve my client of the fee interest in that portion of the property. And I don't think it needs to be recognized formally for purposes of title. So while I'm happy to put the question to the client, it's not necessary for this A and R exercise. Um I'm more than happy to have a conversation with town council regarding it without making any commitments if there's some other way. To address your concern, but that's beyond the confines of what you're required to do with respect to the A and R plan. So I don't think it's necessary. Um I think it's not required under the subdivision control law. And I I I'm not, I'd like to, as a practical matter, talk with town council to address your concern, but I think that's a conversation. Separate and distinct from, as I said, the ministerial act of endorsing an A and R plan.
All right, well, um Clark, let me hold that in abeyance as a tentative motion, but I want to move this along just a little bit. So um next I want to turn to Lauren. Uh Lauren, whether you yourself have any comments on this or um uh thoughts to offer and whether we have any. Buddy from the public who is interested in speaking on this.
Thank you. Uh my only thoughts to offer are my concern with Mr. Brewer's motion in that you really can't condition an A and R approval. That's my concern. I'd be interested in hearing what our town council has to say uh about.
I was gonna get, I was gonna get to see if such a condition would be in order, but. To just to move along the discussion on the substance, um if there's anything you have to offer, there are many members of the public who want to be heard on it.
Okay, no, I have nothing to add. Um and I'll just note that for members of the public, this this isn't a public hearing, so we typically don't take public comment, but with the chair wanting to take public comment. If people wish to address the board, we ask that you insert your name and address into the Q and A section at the bottom of the screen. You can leave written comments or we can promote you to panelists to address the board. We will ask that you state your name and address for the record when you speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh so Carolyn, uh quickly off the top of your head, I hate to put you in that position, but would would the. Uh I I think the concern and my own, I share the concern that this easement issue should be formalized at some point. Uh but is is such a condition to the A and R in order or not?
It it is not, Mr. Chairman. There's actually some case law on this that your your review of an A and R plan is pretty much limited to. Looking at frontage as you have and whether or not it has frontage um on one of the qualified ways. And if you make those findings, then it's entitled to endorsement. Otherwise, you'd have to find it's not entitled to endorsement. And um suggested it have to go through the subdivision, um the full subdivision control process. But it's not appropriate to put it a a condition. I mean, it's one thing to put a note on the plan. That, you know, a lot may not be buildable or that the lot is for conveyance purposes only, but that's different from a conditional um approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, then with that said, um if nobody else has anything to say, I'll entertain a motion on both the. Required findings and whether to endorse or not to endorse. Anybody would like to make that motion?
I will make a a motion that we endorse. This A and R based on the evidence that's been presented to us, which identifies that the lots all have the appropriate. Fifty feet of frontage and there are no encumbrances. That would in some way alter the finding that these are are lots that are specified clearly.
Thank you. A second, please.
I would second that motion.
Okay. Um, all right, um I will take a vote, but I do want to make uh some observations about this property separate from the A and R before we adjourn this matter, but. All right, so all those in favor of the motion, uh Clark?
Nay.
Uh myself, aye. Amy?
Aye.
Uh Kevin?
Aye.
And Deirdre?
Aye.
All right, so the the A and R endorsement will be made. Um I do just want to make a point, so you know, I I appreciate the fact that Mr. Ormond has brought on you, Mr. Brodsky, because. Uh that has been somewhat of an issue in the past. I understand the Concom has an issue with this property with uh work. Within the uh juris- its jurisdiction. I'm also concerned myself, since we now have a clearing, a land clearing bylaw that's under our jurisdiction. Is knowing when. This land was cleared and whether the jurisdiction of that bylaw is in play. So I am going to ask Lauren to obtain whatever information the Concom has on that subject of. When this might have been cleared, but I'm just, I want to flag it for Attorney Brodsky and his client. That we may have an issue with that because I've been out there and it's obviously that the land has been cleared. It's a question of when and whether our new bylaw is in play. But I I I did want to raise that issue tonight and I make note of what the Concom is looking into. Their their jurisdiction is separate, but you know, our jurisdiction potentially, you know, their jurisdiction is probably limited. In geographical scope in relation to Turkey Hill Brook, but. Our jurisdiction potentially would be over the whole of the property. And uh I can tell you, the board does not like to deal with after the fact issues. We're we're gonna, I want to look into it. I think we need to look into it because it's obviously been cleared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I said, I've only cursorily, cursorily, cursorily. Looked at general wetlands issues, but I haven't been engaged to deal with that permitting and I have no information regarding the clearing of a lot.
Well, I I'm going to ask uh Lauren and John Howland to please look into this for us so we can make a determination if we have an issue under the clearing bylaw. All right. Well, with that, we're concluded with this matter. We'll move on to the next one.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
All right, thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Um. I must have left my copy of the agenda on the desk. So the next one is the Situate Hill project, Lauren?
Correct. Uh would you like me to read the public hearing notice?
Yes, uh so for the benefit of the, this is a public hearing, so uh Lauren first needs to read. The uh notice to open the hearing and then we will proceed. And for our new members, our usual process is applicant. Uh peer review, our peer review, if we've hired one for a particular case, then member comments, then public comments. All right, so Lauren, if you would, please.
Thank you. Notice of Public Hearing Class at Planning Board pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty A and Section three hundred dash five point twelve of the Class of Zoning Bylaws. The Planning Board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform, webinar ID eight thirty nine one ninety two four nine four, password five five one seven three two. On Wednesday, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty two at six thirty PM for a site plan review for property being shown on Class of Assessors Maps. C six seventy three twenty and C six seventy three nineteen. Otherwise known as twenty five and thirty, Situate Hill, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero two zero two five. The application is for site plan review for a proposed commercial development containing three structures of office and tradesmen bays for a total of combined. Twenty one thousand eight hundred and ninety square feet of new commercial space. The application is submitted by Crocker to Realty Trust. A copy of the application plans and accompanying documents are on file in the Town Clerk's Office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty one Highland Avenue. With office hours of Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, Tuesday, eight thirty AM to seven PM, and Friday, eight thirty AM to one PM. Electronic copies of said application can be obtained by contacting Planning Director Lauren Lind via email at L Lind at Cohasset MA dot org. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated, signed Amy Glassmire, Chair of Planning Board.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. Um for the, yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to note for the board and the public's sake, we did engage T E C as the peer review engineer for this pro- project. This property had previously been before you for a separate applicant and separate site plan review in recent months. Uh T E C had conducted the peer review at that time, so we used the same peer review firm. They uh weren't able to attend tonight. They did issue their peer review. Late yesterday, so it didn't have not have an opportunity to review and distribute to the board and the applicant. It will be distributed and we will anticipate. That the applicant will have opportunity to respond to that at a continued hearing date, at which time T E C will be present to attend.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um and for the benefit of our new members, I apologize to applicants that were doing a little on the job training with new members tonight, but. Um this is a site plan review under Section twelve point six of our bylaw. It applies to all commercial developments. It is. Not so much a permit in the way a special permit is, but it's sort of a checklist that a number of issues have to be addressed. Uh listed that are listed in the bylaw and it's our job to to see that these. Uh issues are addressed in an adequate fashion to allow the project to go forward. Um as Lauren mentioned, we did see a recent application on this site for a completely different project, uh so I'll be interested to hear the. The history of where we are and how we got to tonight, but um. And you know, I don't know if the new members have been given a copy of the bylaw. If you want to look at online while you're sitting there, it's at Cohasset E three sixty and the zoning bylaw is. Uh. Chapter three hundred and you can find Section twelve point six and it's twelve point six B. Which sets out the various criteria that we're here to consider. So. Um with that introduction, uh Mr. Hassett, I assume you're speaking for the applicant. Uh if you'd like to start, you go right ahead.
Great, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Um Lauren, if you could also provoke uh promote Walter Sullivan, I'd appreciate that.
Certainly.
Excuse me, before the applicant gets started, the the there's the same issue uh on our agenda. Where uh it it references three hundred dash five point one two. And we and we don't have that uh section in our in our bylaw. It's it's twelve point six, I believe. The site plan review, three hundred dash twelve point six. I just wanted to make that clarification before you get started.
Yeah, two uh there is, there is no five point one two. Five point one is our.
Right.
Area regulations, but um but yes, the the correct reference to what we're dealing with here is three hundred twelve point six. So thank you for pointing that out, Clark. All right, um welcome, Walter. Uh if you're going to make the presentation, go go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh for the record, Walter Sullivan, I'm counsel for the applicant, um Paul Davis, who's also been promoted. Um and I, as you know, uh Jeff Hassett from Morse Engineering is the project engineer. Um this is site plan review. We are in the Technology Business District. The proposal calls for three tradesman buildings as the plan indicates in its title. Um we believe this is a permitted use under your bylaw. Um and so that's why we were coming in for strictly site plan review. There are, as I indicated, three buildings. Um for twenty one thousand eight hundred and ninety square feet. The lot, as the as some of the board members know, is rather large. It's two hundred forty one thousand three hundred and forty seven. Square feet. We have over four hundred and sixty one square feet of frontage, uh excuse me, feet of frontage. Um so Mr. Davis intends to use um one of the buildings for his own use for his business here in town. Um and then allow uh have tradesmen use the other two buildings. Um I think perhaps now if we could um share the plan, Lauren, uh if if it's at the pleasure of the chair. We would have Jeff Hassett take the board through the plan um that we propose.
And can I just interrupt? As I'm looking at my chart of the table of uses, can we point to specifically what you're citing as as an allowed use?
Of course, under miscellaneous trade and repair service and shops, if you look under TV, it says permitted use, yes.
I see, all right. Well, it's miscellaneous business offices, so.
I believe it says, miss, yeah, so this, these are going to be tradesmen, uh Mr. Mr. Callahan. So this is trade and repair service shops. That's exactly what we are.
Okay, I'll I'll go go ahead and I'll I'll keep looking at this and I.
Thank you.
Address it if I need to later on.
Thank you. Jeff?
All right, Walter, thank you for the intro. Um so for the record, my name is Jeff Hassett. I'm a civil engineer with Morse Engineering. Um here representing the applicant, Crocker Nantasket LLC. And as as was noted before, there was a. Completely different project that was permitted through the planning board on this property a few months back. Um that was for a different applicant who ended up not purchase purchasing the property. The current applicant, Crocker Nantasket, has a property under agreement to purchase with a a totally different project. Um so we're here for a site plan review application to construct three trade tradesman style buildings. The property is located at the end of Situate Hill. In Situate Hill is located off of three A, opposite Forest Street. So sheet two is the existing conditions plan and it shows there this property is made up of two parcels totaling about five and a half acres. It which is entirely upland. The property was previously cleared and it slopes up to the rear. Where there's a flat area that was uh graded out at the top of the property.
Excuse me, can I ask a question? Can you show this all on a map?
Uh I I can bring up um a G I S map, certainly.
It's yeah, just it's a little bit hard to see and for the purposes of uh our new members, it might be helpful for them.
Yeah, of course, just just give me um, it'll take me thirty seconds to to bring it up.
Thank you.
Well, let me let me ask, do we all know where this is? It's 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 off three A behind the storage facility that exists on three A. I don't want to unnecessarily delay this scrambling for a map. All right, that's fine. That's good. It's that's the that white building is the new storage, so it's to to give everybody an orientation.
Exactly, and the two uh subject properties are are these two here. At at the top, at the end of Situate Hill with Forest Street across. Okay, let's have the intersection.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so when uh Situate Hill was constructed back and I think it was circa two thousand and six. They installed all the utilities necessary for the development of these properties. Um so there's a gas stub, electric, um a drainage stub, sewer and water. And they installed in um a drainage infiltration basin located here. That was sized to accommodate the runoff from both the roadway as well as the development of all three of all three of these lots. And this property is, for the most part, cleared. In the back left corner, there's a wooded area. And there's currently a gravel driveway coming up here to the level spot at the top of the property. So the next sheet is the erosion control plan. We do recognize that erosion will be critical um during construction of this project. Um because they did did have some issues when they were building the roadway itself. Um for that reason, we have double rows of erosion control barriers. One there and one here. Stockpiles will be all um at the top of the property in the level area. And the driveway is going to traverse across the hillside um here, intercepting runoff as well. And then with the exception of that driveway, the front portion of this property is going to re- remain in the state that it is now, so vegetated to work as a filter. Uh there will also be stabilized construction entrances and the catch basins in the vicinity will have silt sacks in them. So now getting into the 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 project itself, the. the access driveway will be twenty feet wide, coming off of the top of the cul-de-sac, traversing up the hill and back to and up to the elevation of that level area in the front. We're proposing three buildings. The first building, Building A, is just under seventy five hundred square feet and an area. And the intent of that building is that it will be occupied by the applicant. The applicant owns and op- um owns and operates Rosano Davis Septic Pumping. And they would park their vehicles in this building and also have a small office in the back corner. The other two buildings will be um about seventy two hundred square feet each and will each have four rental units um with the intent that they would be re- rented by tradesmen style contractors. So maybe a plumber or electrician, et cetera. We are proposing trees along the driveway throughout the parking lot as well as behind Building A for screening. The way this property is laid out, it really is not going to be very visible from any other property. Um, due to the topography, you'd have to really turn and look up the hill to see it. And and also just being at the end of the cul-de-sac. In the layout of the buildings from from the road, you'll only see the back of the buildings, not the parking and et cetera. Uh, as far as parking, the required number of parking spaces based on the area of the buildings is forty seven and we're providing fifty seven. Uh, we're providing separate dumpsters for each one of the units. And in terms of zoning, we have a zoning table um in the bottom left corner. But to summarize it, the, we're not asking for any zoning relief. It's an allowed use. The uh property conforms to area frontage and width. The buildings comply to the property line setbacks in the project as well under the um the percentage of impervious and building coverage. So moving on to the grading and utilities, um to elaborate a little bit more on the on the stormwater, the this uh, this stormwater basin was sized to handle the development of this property with up to one point nine five acres of impervious and we're coming in at nineteen and a half percent less than that. It's intended to handle all of the impervious, but for for good measure, we are proposing roof drywells for all the roof runoff. Um, similarly, there is a septic system in place located in that this general area, which was also sized to accommodate the um this project. That portion will be reviewed by the Board of Health. Um, and then also the 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 water um and gas and electric utilities will be connected in that there are stubs at the frontage of the property. The next property, uh next property, the next uh page shows a fire truck turning analysis showing that a fire truck can move maneuver throughout uh this property throughout all three parking lots. Uh, typically, this would be reviewed by the the fire department, um so we are waiting on comments from them, from the fire lieutenant. Think I'll skip over the construction details. Um, I wanted to, I'm only showing this plan to show the density of the project that was permitted previously um to showing that the the proposed project is far less dense. And also, the traffic demand will be much less for this style development compared to nineteen office uh buildings. And then the architectural plans, this um, this would be Building A and, you know, typical one-story um steel building with the bays facing towards the rear property line, the doors. Oh, an open floor plan with a small office in the back left corner. And then Buildings B and C will be identical. Um, they each have four units with an overhead door and a pedestrian door. And the floor plan is open. A restroom for each unit. So a- as mentioned before, um, this is being reviewed by T E C. We have not seen those comments yet. So we'd um love to hear comments from the board or any butters. And then following discussion, the intent would be to continue this for about a month, if that works with your schedule. And in that time, we would plan to address the peer review comments and um and meet again. So with that, I'll turn it, turn it back over to the board.
Okay, um, in our new rotation of comments, I'm next, so I'm I'm glad you mentioned the septic system because I thought in the beginning of your presentation, you said it was designed for a sewer hookup and there isn't, there's no sewer up here, but um I I'm not sure. I'll leave it to the pleasure of the board whether we should at least see the data that is being submitted to the Board of Health regarding the adequacy of the system. Um, I also have quickly looked through the table of uses and I agree that this falls under an as of use right in this district. Um, I'm also a little concerned since Mr. Davis runs a septic business um under four point three uh B of our bylaw additional use regulations. And we have a prohibition about things that are injurious, dangerous, noxious or offensive and um, I just would maybe like a little explanation of how those septic trucks are going to be stored. Is there gonna be any you know, transfer of stuff out of the trucks into some other storage facility or between trucks and, you know, what safeguards might exist with that? And then with respect to traffic, have you done any traffic study for this in in at all?
Um, there was a traffic study done for the previous project, um done, done by V H P. And this project, we, it's our opinion, will be far less traffic than that use.
Well, yeah, it it to agree, it's a different use and it may not in be the same intensity through the entirety of the day, but with tradesmen and with another project we had further down three A. You know, there's intense use at the beginning and the end of the day with tradesmen and so um uh again, I don't know if our uh peer review, I haven't seen it either, so I don't know if they've addressed that, but I just I wanna at least flag it as a potential issue, so.
Yeah, and to to elaborate that on that a little bit more, um res- the applicant has two other um properties in this in this vicinity. And they, it it'll be, you know, very similar traffic flow, whether they come out of Forest Street. Currently, they, the trucks, trucks come down Forest Street onto three A. They'll be coming from the other direction from Situate Hill. So it's a, it's a very similar volume of traffic from from that use from Building A anyways.
All right, well, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it to the pleasure of the board if we want some more analysis of that, but all right, that's all I have at the moment. Uh, Amy?
Um, thank you for that and thank you for taking up the question about the traffic issues. Um, we did have a traffic study that was uh done for the previous design and that traffic study was predicated on the belief that people would arrive and they would stay and then they would leave. Or people would actually even ride their bikes from where they lived to these little condominium spaces. Um, so I would uh ask at least that the applicant consider how the existing report could be evaluated based on uh what we know this practice to be to to reassure us that in fact, there would not be uh issues of traffic conflict uh during key moments of the day when we know that the the area itself is very congested. It's already, you know, it's congested. Everybody knows it's congested. And so if what you would like to do is to avoid a um, the the cost associated with the traffic study, then I would ask that there be somebody that actually looks at that traffic study and relates it technically to what is being um proposed. Um, the second item is that I um I'm glad that Tom caught the the point about sewer. I did too. I know that there is um only a septic there. And so um I would appreciate it if uh we had from the the uh Board of Public Health uh documentation of this the condition of that septic system. And uh, given that you are adding um hard surfaces of a substantial amount uh almost up to the limit, uh I would like to see that the the hard surfaces are not gonna generate runoff that could overwhelm the system. Uh, and then finally, I would like to know uh whether and to what extent there's expectations that around the individual trades spaces that there will be additional storage outside so that there be some understanding of how the landscape around the building is actually gonna be used. If the people are bringing in um, you know, containers full of uh various kinds of equipment and materials, it's important that we know that that's going to be planned for and also know what the contents are and also be able to prescribe what kinds of constraints there should be on those site, those uh potential contents because um uh you are gonna be potentially dealing with volatiles. You're gonna be dealing with uh oils and grease and uh lots of different materials and we wanna make sure that it doesn't end up in a place it shouldn't be. So it needs to be really clearly specified how the outside of the area is going to be used as well as the inside.
Just add, if there's gonna be any outside use or storage, I'd also refer you to four point three F of our bylaw regarding enclosure of cer- certain uses. Uh, take heed of that. Uh, you all said, Amy?
I'm done. Thank you.
All right, Kevin?
Yeah, um, I guess three things and I'll just uh point out that the traffic study is something that I would think would be a must uh have uh with an application of this um uh location and magnitude. Uh, no one even has to try to turn left or right off of King Street, that southern extension off of Forest Avenue that connects to the north side of three A to know that there already are traffic issues at multiple times during the day um from that direction. Um, coming down Situate Hill from Crocker Lane, there's already traffic issues at multiple times a day depending on the inflow or outflow to existing um commercial establishments on Crocker Lane. Um, this would only be additive to that. So again, I'll just come back to if there hasn't been a traffic study done, why not? And um I would wanna see one. Um, I don't think there was, my second point would be, I don't think there was ever any mention with regard to the height of um what's proposed here, the uh maximum height and whether it fits in with the existing bylaw requirements for this uh area. Uh, a mention was made about the view looking up towards where this development would occur from, I guess, the three A side of things. There's also view or there's also uh a consideration from the other direction. Um, the uh Avalon side would be looking down towards this and heights would need to be um considered from that perspective as well. So that's why I asked the question and after I point out my um third point here, perhaps Jeff, you have some information on that that you could share. Um, my third point is just where it catches on uh with what Amy had said about outside uses in the area of these um trades um focused businesses. You know, we all know tradespeople um rely on their vehicles to get to and from their clients. It's not necessarily, it sounds like this is being um set up as a, you go to the commercial property, but these are tradespeople that would go out to clients and other locations. They'd obviously be doing that um not on bikes um as much as we might like to envision that. Um, they'd be using work vehicles and uh at certain times of the year, those vehicles are often um idled so that the inside of the vehicles um provides a comfortable space for them to to work in, to take calls in, to get to and from their clients, from their sites where they're doing their work. Um, I I I could see that being a potential problem with the use of these properties as envisioned or as um uh described here um with idling of 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 vehicles um uh and not just the use of them as um previous questions had arisen. So I'll leave it at those points. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Uh, Jeff, you wanna just quick adjust the height issue? What's the height of the buildings?
Yeah, the height is listed in the zoning table at twenty five feet. Um, and the maximum allowed is forty five feet. Um, I think we can, we can get that information added to the architectural plans as well. Um, and I know we'll have to follow up with some additional information on some of the other comments as well, but just to clarify some of them.
No, that, no, let me not, let me, before we go to that, because quite a lot of the clarification is gonna have to come through another meeting because we don't have our peer review yet, so. Um, yeah, let me get uh Deirdre those comments.
I don't think I'm muted. I think you can hear me. Um, uh, mine were just sort of uh responding to Amy and Kevin's and uh your concerns about the traffic issues. We all know that is a very dangerous intersection without any kind of traffic light. We have people coming out of the storage facility, people using the back roads coming out of the medical facility. Uh, at certain times of the day, the the families going up to the sports complex are very bad, so I would I I would think that a additional look at the traffic situation would be critical, especially with large trucks such as Rosano's pumping trucks, et cetera. I also have some real concerns uh regarding the environmental issues and the kinds of um tradesmen and people that might be up in the other two units. Um, whether it be, you know, a pool company with chemicals, I think we need to be very cautious and very careful about uh the exterior, as Amy said, where things will be stored, how things will be stored and um the the uh possible chance that uh materials get just thrown out into woods at the end of the day and run down to the catch basin. So I, those are just my concerns, um and just would hope that we can address that at another time.
Uh, well, like, like I said, we have a section of our uses, a part of the bylaw that deals with noxious uses and I you know, we can certainly make some conditions with respect to that. The other thing about traffic, I just wanted to mention quickly to Walter and Jeff is with the previous project, I think we put in conditions regarding it. Uh, there were concerns about the sightlines when you're coming out of Situate Hill Drive onto three A, so that's another issue. All right, Clark, uh, Deirdre, I assume you finished or?
I am finished. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Clark. Amy, I'll get to you after Clark's had his chance.
Yeah, um, so I have concerns with what's um the, the, what's on the documentation for this uh site plan um and this particular project. And uh the first and probably most important is uh the 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 design of the of the site has uh what appears to be one-to-one slope or maybe even steeper without retaining walls. And I, I, I feel like that it's, it's already a s- a steep site and changing some of those grades so that they're two or three times steeper I think is problematic in 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 the back and the front and along the access road. Uh, I would ask the applicant to indicate um the slope uh on their um uh on their drawings as a revision for the next time we come see them for the driveway up from the cul-de-sac and from all of the, all of the um extreme slope areas. Um, it is, there, there are some extreme slope areas in different parts of town, I think one off of Crocker Lane um that was heavily vegetated uh in order to be uh stabilized. But this is a location that um is is highly visible from uh Route three A, so um, I would recommend to the applicant that they um look at perhaps um a different approach to uh the use of the site than than what's being proposed for slopes. Um, the second thing uh I wanted to bring up is that these are a metal buildings. The color indicated on the architectural drawings is cobalt blue. They will be highly visible from uh Route three A and I have to say that cobalt blue um is not one of the best colors to select for a metal building um to be, I guess, I I'd say less visible. This is not a uh industrial park um and i- in the middle of nowhere, it's, it's, it, this is Cohasset and um I think that the storage building went through great efforts to make a good-looking building as well as the um, the medical office building adjacent to this sunrise. So I would say that the building is immediately adjacent and that this would be affecting visually. Um, uh aesthetics were were critical. Now, I think that there is potential uh for improvement by the applicant and and better choices for the metal uh building um or the panels that face the street. Um, but but right now, what I see is just it, it will not look good and I think that there's a a lot of room for improvement, so I would recommend that the applicant look into that. Uh, what ways that the, it can be improved because it's gonna be highly visible, a bunch of metal buildings that are bright blue. Uh, and then finally, uh the drawings were of the architectural Uh, and then finally, uh, the drawings were of the architectural, uh, were fairly um uh, basic, uh, and I would remind the applicant that Cohasset is a green community uh, under the jurisdiction of the Green Community Act. And uh, for the purposes of buildings like this, the stretch code, I believe, applies. Um, there, I know there's a minimum uh, size for commercial projects that uh, gets a pass. But um, I think in this, in this era of um uh, uh, of trying to design buildings that uh, uh, don't waste energy. Um, I think there's uh, uh, so, another thing that the applicant can get addressed as a part of their overall um, uh, project uh, strategy and approvals. Those are the only comments I have for now.
Thank you, Clark. And for the benefit of our new members, Clark's an architect and often gives us uh, architectural comments that are very valuable to us. And Walter, regarding the color, I'll just make a guess here that under twelve P six B one, we could probably address the color issue, should, should the board be inclined to do so. All right, Amy, uh, you have another comment you want to make? Amy? Hello? You got your hand?
You're muted.
Yeah, sorry, I was looking at my notes. Um, so I have only a few other comments. One is that I would like to have some understanding of the weight of the trucks that will be operating on a relatively steep slope. Uh, they're going to be moving in and out at all times of the day and also all times of the year. And so does the, the weight of the actual septic trucks require that there be a special type of roadbed to ensure that there is a sufficient stability on the roadbed? Uh, so it just doesn't come apart um, very quickly with the weight from the trucks. Now, there is, is we didn't talk about anything about the interiors of these buildings from the standpoint of human habitation. But will there be toilets? Will there be water on site? Will there be interior spaces that um, can be sort of sectioned off and, and made into a habitable space? Uh, that would be something we would want to know for safety purposes. Uh, and that's my last set of comments.
Uh, next, Lauren, do you have any kind of Lauren or Carolyn? Do you have any particular comments to offer at this point in time?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Carolyn?
Nor do I, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Lauren, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak or be heard to have a written comment?
I'm not seeing any. I'll just remind folks, if you wish to address the board, please use uh, the Q and A at the bottom of the screen to input your name and address.
Yes, and I, I apologize that we didn't go through that spiel at the beginning of the meeting tonight about public, how the public can participate. All right, so um, without anything else, we have peer review. We have a number of comments from the board on various issues that I saw Walter taking copious notes about. So I won't summarize them, but uh, it's obvious we will need to continue this hearing. Lauren, what would be the next available date and time?
I would suggest that we continue to June twenty-second at six thirty.
Okay, and we, we have two other matters that night as of the moment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, all right, can I entertain a motion to continue? I assume Walter, that's good with you?
Uh, yeah, that's acceptable. We should be able to address all the comments.
All right, yeah, and, and then including the peer review that hopefully you will get tomorrow, Friday. And uh, we'll see it as well. And again, we, we, you know, our usual practice is to have things, your responses and additional materials to us at least a week ahead of time. Okay, so.
Motion to continue to date uh, indicated by Chairman Callahan.
It'll be June twenty-second at six thirty. Second, please?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Clark.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Uh, Amy? Amy, you're muted, but I heard, I saw your mouth open, so I'll take it. Uh, Kevin?
Aye.
And now, Deirdre?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right. All right, thank you, Walter and Jeff, um, Mr. Davis. All right, um, our next matter is we have, like, this is a new matter as well. We're correct. I don't, again, I apologize, Lauren, I didn't bring the copy of the agenda with me, but uh.
Yes, so the next item on the agenda that you have, um, you've already addressed as you took things out of order, that was ninety Howard Gleason Road. The following item after that is forty-four Little Harbor Road, which is the continued large house review.
Okay, then there was just forty-six border after that, right?
Uh, forty-six Hobart Lane and then forty-six border.
Right, okay, right. So let's bring forward forty-four uh, Little Harbor Road. Uh, for the benefit of our new members, this is uh, a process that we have, it's called large home review. It is essentially very similar to what you just did in the site plan review for commercial property. It's essentially the equivalent in a residential property for houses over a certain size. Five point four of our bylaw is where um, specifically subsection C is of the criteria that we are supposed to consider in these things. Um, we are, have two matters tonight that we continued from last week for the submission of some additional data. So we'll start with forty-four. Uh, who's here on behalf, Ms. Weston, Mr. Pappage? Okay, so if you want to go right ahead and jump in, uh, please do.
Yes, um, Mr. Chairman, I know there were, um, you were looking for additional data on, you know, compilation of data for neighboring properties, square footage. But I know you have some new board members. Do you want us to do a quick overview? Or are you just wanting that uh, data because you, you will be voting?
Yeah, I, for the board, for the new members, under five point four C one A, one of the criteria for our review is the scale of buildings relative to the neighborhood. So we are, uh, make it a practice that the applicants uh, show us data of nearby houses. Circle of so, so many feet of what their comparative size is. So that, because one of the findings we need to make is the proposal is within, you know, harmonious scale with its surrounding area. Uh, I'll ask our members, uh, with the, with the interest of moving this along, but if, that are new members, if they would want a little more background information about what's being presented. We, we otherwise dealt with. Yeah.
Chairman, if I could just interrupt? Sorry, it's, it's Carolyn. Sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I just want to point out one thing. I, I recognize we have two new members with us tonight. And if you want um, some background information provided, so that's, that's perfectly fine. But this is a public hearing. It only requires a majority vote of the board. You did already open the public hearing and you've continued it. So the two new members aren't eligible to actually vote on this. But certainly for purposes of, of background and context, whatever you want to do, Mr. Chairman.
That, that's fine. Then thank you. Then it, you know, in the interest of time, Ms. Weston, if you just want to present the data to us, then we'll move along.
Okay, can I share my screen?
That permission is enabled.
Oh, okay. Uh, let's see.
You just have to click the greens. Yeah.
Okay, so let's, um, so I think this is what you were um, requesting. Um, there are two sheets here, but this is a compilation of homes that um, are in the neighborhood. So this is our home that we are proposing to renovate. Um, this section is getting a two-story addition. These two wings are staying and a new garage here. But um, uh, I think we've, hopefully we've given you the data that you need. Um, this is the house that we're talking about, the Whalen's property at forty-four Little Harbor Road. And these are some of the neighboring properties and there's lot sizes. And they're FARs. So um, I think we're sort of in the middle. Um, we're proposed uh, square footage, um, without the attic. It's about fifty-seven seventy-three. Um, the house to the left here is uh, seventy-one hundred. Um, the house here, which is um, uh, is, I think, uh, this one is forty-four forty-four um, square feet. So I think if you scroll down, um, this neighborhood is actually getting quite renovated. Some of these ranch houses, which were existing, are getting second stories like this one here. Which is more to the beginning of Little Harbor Road. But um, this property here was actually subdivided in there two homes back to back that are, you know, quite large. So, and I, I think, um.
I wonder if they came for large home review, but anyway. I digress.
They did.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I, I think that, you know, I, I feel like our, that um, project that we're proposing. Um, and this gives you a little bit of a feel that um, that we're really trying to um, create something. This, this house is a little, it feels a little un, um, unequal, if you will, with the additions. There were two big additions were added. So by adding this center portion, and actually the garage doesn't meet the setback as we talked about before. So we are now moving the garage, um, and we are reducing a, a, a very large amount of pavement. And Sean can talk to that if you'd like him to. But um, uh, we're really reducing the, the coverage on the lot. And um, we feel like making a, a great improvement. So um, we hope that uh, the additional information that we gave you um, is what you were looking for.
Okay. Um, well, it's just Amy, Clark and myself are going to be voting on this. Um, Amy or Clark, do either of you have any other questions or comments on the material provided?
No questions. It seems like that's adequate um, representation of what's uh, what's around the, the adjacent neighbors.
Yeah, I, I, I want to, I just want to point out that I appreciate that FAR is not a measure for our residential structures at the moment. But I appreciate you providing that information. Um, it's, it's very, very, well, I would say it's very useful for some research that's ongoing. So it's, it's interesting to see it when it's interpreted that way, uh, so.
The nice comparison with.
Yeah, I appreciate you doing that. Um, Amy, do you have anything to add here?
No, I believe that the applicant has provided us with the information that we requested.
Okay, so um, with that, I'll entertain a motion to make the required findings on the five point four C and uh, whether to approve or disapprove.
Well, we, we only approve or approve with conditions. So, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the large room um uh, applicants um, without condition.
I, I just want to add to that, that they, they have met the requisite criteria of five point four C. I just wanted to, to get into a habit of making findings when a bylaw requires us to make some findings. So if, as, if I may amend that, uh, that's the motion. Can I have a second? Amy? I'll second it. All right, I'll second it to move it along. So all in favor, Clark?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Aye, Amy, aye.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Weston. And uh, we'll move on to the next one, which is forty-six Hobart Lane. Uh, for our new members, similar situation, we had opened this hearing. We asked for additional information on the issue of scale relative to the neighbors. Ms. Weston, the floor is yours.
Well, let's see, I'm try, I'm trying to share the screen again because um, Mr. Chairman, this was what you had asked us to do um, last week again, um, for this property. Um, let's see.
We can still see your screen.
I know, and I'm the wrong, it's the wrong project, so um, so.
This needs to move down one page.
Yes, yes. Hold on one second. I'm, so.
If I, if I recall, for this neighborhood, dear, you know, your house was in the five or six thousand square foot range. Maybe eight, maybe eight. I, I can't recall that. You had, you had a whopper thirteen thousand square foot house in the neighborhood.
Yes, um, let's see, here we go. So we, we prepared the same thing for, whoop, sorry. Are you there? Um.
Well, if you, if you want to rattle off the data without the pictures.
Thank you. Uh, so this house, the reared-in house at forty-six Hobart Lane. Um, that property um, has quite a, a large group of homes around it. Um, we're proposing um the, the new house would be about eighty-five hundred square feet. But some of the neighboring properties are thirteen thousand square feet, seventy-six hundred square feet. Um, and I think you have um, pictures of those. Um, I apologize, I'm really trying to get those, but I think you must have the data in front of you that um.
Well, we have the, we, we received the data, yes. I don't have it in front of me, but again, because you provide FARs, are the FARs somewhat in line here or are they out of whack?
No, they're, that, that's, uh, you know, this is all from the assessor's maps. And um, the FAR is, you know, just like we prepared for the other, the other house.
But in, in line with the neighboring houses?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Uh, again, Clark or Amy, do you have any other questions or comments?
Well, I would just reiterate what, what, some, a couple of comments that I made at the uh, at the first hearing that uh, the, that this, that this particular um, approach to the project um, uh, is, 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 has, in my opinion, an, an excellent um, design approach. The, the bassing um, is, is broken up in, in a variety of ways. The landscaping seems um, well-considered relative to the neighbors. Um, and, and, and I think it's a, uh, will be a, a welcome addition to the neighborhood and relative to what's there now.
I have no further comments.
All right, entertain a motion, uh, please.
Motion to approve um, without conditions. Uh, and then the five point four subsection C has met, the criteria has been met.
Thank you, thank you, Clark. Uh, I'll second that. Uh, uh, take a vote, uh, Clark?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye. Amy?
Amy Glassmer, aye.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. That's approved.
Good luck with your project.
Yes, thank you very much. Sorry about the last, uh, okay, thank you.
No, lesson learned. No, never let it, never let it happen again.
I won't. I promise. There I am. Okay, thank you.
Um, all right, I'm looking at the list of participants again to our members of the public. If anybody is here for forty-six uh, Border Street, that has been asked to be continued by the applicant and that will be heard on June twenty-second at six thirty. Um, so for the balance of the evening, I'll, I'll try to be brief, just a few administrative items I want to touch on. Uh, we have three sets of minutes. Where did they go? From November third twenty, twenty twenty-one, April thirteen, twenty twenty-two, April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. Um, only Amy and Clark and I can vote on those. Um, do either of you have any changes, comments, comments to? All right, then, no, all right, then I'll, I'll take a collective motion to approve all three. Anyone?
Make a motion to approve all three of the minutes you just described and the dates so stated.
Um, second, uh, with Clark is, uh, roll call vote, Clark?
Uh, aye.
Uh, Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmer, aye.
I think that's taken care of. Thank you. All right, I just want to make a few uh, comments about our calendar and some things to think about coming up forward. First, uh, again, I want to welcome our new members, Kevin and Deirdre. I appreciate your wish to, your willingness to serve the town and devote the time to this. I want to thank Amy for her past two years as chair, leading us through some difficult times and some choppy times with the Zoom process. Um, and then congratulations to Paul, who I see is one of our panelists uh, on his election to the select board. Um, don't, don't be a stranger to us, Paul, please. Um, so uh, a few organizational matters I'd like to discuss. Um, for our upcoming calendar, um, we had meetings scheduled for June first and June twenty-second as regular meetings. Uh, we scheduled a special meeting for June fifteenth to deal with uh, a pending proposal for a new regulation. And we'll bring our new members up to speed on that. Um, due to a posting snafu, the one matter we had on for June first is being moved to June fifteenth, which was just going to be the regulation, but we will, is a site plan review for a project at the uh, country, the golf club. But we will put that on on the fifteenth. But we will put that on on the fifteenth first and then we will deal with our regulation. The twenty-second, as we know now, we're up to at least three hearings. Then I guess our next meeting is in July and are we just doing one meeting a month for July and August?
We have two July meetings in our calendar. We typically, for the, for the new members, we typically meet twice a month. And then we, in August, we typically only have one meeting per month. We try to give people a break in the end of summer.
Yeah, that's, that's the mental health break. So, all right, so on June first, I still want to keep us having a meeting because there's a few things I'd like to discuss in detail. I don't want to discuss any of these matters in detail tonight or, or take any actions on it. But the first thing is that because of Paul's election, we have a vacancy in one of our full member seats. By state law, that elected vacancy is filled by an appointment by a vote of both the planning board and the Board of Select, the Select Board, excuse me. We will have four votes, votes on that and the Select Board will have five votes on that in their full membership. Lauren, the, so Paul's seat had two years left in his term and the appointment lasts for the full term or for just one year?
Just one year and then it will go to an election for one remaining year after that.
Okay, all right. So, so whoever wishes to fill Paul's seat, he will be appointed for a year, run for election, then you want a reelection for a five-year term, you'll be doing elections two years in a row. I know that Kevin, you've expressed interest in that seat. That is welcome. Thank you. That means if Kevin was to go into that seat, then we have a vacancy in our associate membership and I assume the same rule applies, that there would be an appointment for one year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I think it moves us to open this up to the public. I know the Select Board did not address it at all last night, but I will address it to the members of the public. If anybody's interested in serving in either of these positions, I would like to have people say either or or both in the event that Kevin was moved up, that we would have an associate membership. I'd like to try to deal with it both at the same time so that we have a full complement of a board as soon as possible. The process for selecting this person, for persons, hasn't been determined in the past. It's been like a written statement of interest. I have actually received one from another person. And then in the past, there have been interviews, even I think when Amy was appointed to a vacant seat, even though there wasn't a competition for it, but that, that'll be determined by the Select Board and my, and this board about how we do that. So I think for the moment, if anybody is interested, they should submit a written statement of their background and their reasons for their interest and at the moment, until the procedure is more formalized, to submit it to Chris Senior and to Lauren Lind, if you would. So we will hopefully get a full board complement as soon as possible. The other things that I want to talk about, that I'd like to talk about in detail on the first is, which is next week, because of the changes in the board, we have lost four liaisons to other boards and and for our new members, the charters of many other committees in town and subcommittees that have been created out of the master plan call for a planning board representative on each of them. And I'm aware at the moment, I think we have seven of these positions. We call them liaison positions. I serve as one of the planning board's reps on the zoning bylaw working group. Amy is the planning board's rep on the master plan implementation committee. And Clark is the planning board's rep on the Elm Street Corridor Working Group. The four vacancies we now have are a second member to the zoning working group because the planning board gets two seats on that one. And we've had some other resignations on that board that have come in the last two days. We have a representative on the open space committee. We have a representative on the affordable housing committee. And we have a representative on the community preservation committee. At least three of those involve planning-related issues and Lauren, I think you were going to put together a summary of what all those boards do and their approximations of their schedules. You know, as, for other boards and some of these subcommittees are working intensely on one topic and at most, the practices of boards in this town is to go no more than two meetings a month, most of them at night. Some of them are in the day. But some of the boards just meet once a month and community preservation tends to have a lot of meetings around the two-town meetings and not much at other times of the year. So but Lauren, I'll ask Lauren to circulate the description of the four positions that are open and what those boards do and their time commitments. And, you know, last, when I got on this board two years ago, I was on like two or three of those. It's, there's seven in total that we are going to have some people who are going to be on more than one, but I like to, you know, last year we spread it around more. So I'd like everybody on the board and our new members to think about it and, you know, if they can make the commitment to it, to, to express interest. We'll discuss it at the next meeting and make those appointments. Usually we've had one volunteer and that volunteer is it. If we have a competition, we'll deal with the competition similar to what we dealt with tonight. The other thing I'd like to discuss next week is that, as you all know, Katie Dugan resigned as chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee in the zoning working group. She circulated a letter to the members of our board as well as the Select Board following that Woody Chidick, who's the chair of the zoning board, has resigned from the zoning working group as well. And, and Katie's letter made some points and some critiques of both our board and the Select Board that I think we need to discuss. We need to discuss those head-on. And then also because of these resignations and these other subcommittees that are out there doing very particular work, I think we need to discuss in detail how our board needs to participate, see that they're going, take, maybe take leadership roles, take charge of these situations or how we should react to these various changes that are coming on any planning-related issues. So, you know, be prepared to discuss. I hope everybody, if they haven't seen Katie's letter, please do, please review it. Katie, I think is out there in the public. I'll invite her to come that night as well because she, she asked and volunteered to discuss with either of our boards her comments. So I'm going to invite her and give her that opportunity. Other little things on June first about organization, you know, you saw my circulating the comment thing. Think about this, not, not advocating change. I just, you know, happened to notice when it's been going on for quite a while, but the selectmen are meeting at seven. We used to meet at seven in the pre-Zoom COVID days. I don't know if anybody wants to switch from six-thirty back to seven. It's all about your dinner and family commitments. You know, we can discuss that. I, I don't know. In our agenda, I noticed on the selectmen's agenda, they have a public comment period. I don't know if we formally have that. Way, way back when I was on CONCON, we did too. And I don't know if anybody would find that valuable. We can do that. I'd like to, you know, discuss with Amy today about, you know, some various issues about enforcement and follow-up on the three issue and making it perhaps a permanent thing of asking John Howland to either give us a verbal or written report once a month on just follow-up on the projects that have been permitted and, you know, what's going on and whether all of our permits we've issued have been applied. So it's just that kind of organizational stuff that I just want to be able to talk. But hopefully next week, have liaison appointments in place and we'll certainly have more information on how the process to get new members is going. So if anybody else has anything else, a member comments, observations, questions? Clark, Amy?
Deirdre, Kevin. Really? No. Good job running your first meeting as chairman, Tom. Even though you had a couple of cancellations, we, you kind of got caught up on the schedule. That was good.
Well, you know.
And we're out of here before nine.
No, and I'm going to, you know, those of you who are new, I, you know, I, I come from a history of being on boards that used, that used to go to eleven or ten o'clock. I don't know who's got the deck. Used to go to eleven and ten o'clock routinely. I don't advocate that, but I also don't advocate that we turn into a pumpkin at eight-thirty. So we, you know, my, my hope is that I, I, I'm in favor of the current scheduling that we just schedule everybody at six-thirty and deal with it in order because I think scheduling at assigned times that we used to do creates its own problems. But, you know, I want to make sure that we give everybody, the applicant ourselves and the members of the public, the adequate time to deal things and, and try to avoid kicking cans down the road when we don't have to kick the can down the road. So you know, that, that's going to be my approach, but I, you know, I appreciate all the time people volunteer here and they have other commitments and I'll be respectful of that. But thank you, thank you again for your confidence in voting for me tonight. Amy, you got your hand up, but you're muted.
I just would like to add something to the, the prior comment, to Clark's comment about your chair today. And that is, I would like us to schedule as part of our discussion of how we reorganize ourselves, the extent to which we need to economize on the numbers of things we try to do and want to do and make, make some kind of an ordering so that we know what's the most critical things that we have to do and those things that can be done with less of a board content to it, except for when it needs to come to us so that we are being told what the findings are. So I'm thinking in terms of the zoning bylaw working committee. It's basically not a committee anymore, right? It's lost two of its major members.
No, it's.
Well, but it's, okay, but, but the point is, since we already know that we're going to have our legal counsel help us in revising the zoning bylaw, rather than having it be something which has this, you know, continuous circulation that we map it out and say, for, for two months, something happens and then we hear two months that we hear, two months that we hear. So that we cut down the numbers of meetings that everybody has to go to. I'm just this is not to discuss, it's just to say, in the future, when we talk about this kind of set of issues, I'd like to bring that issue up.
All right, well, we, we can discuss that for, we can discuss that for the next week. I'll just say this. I, you know, the liaison, the, the, the subcommittees that are going on are dealing with very specific, very important topics. And, you know, one of my expectations, you know, I, I don't know that I have adequately explained what the working group is doing fully. I've tried. I know our attention spans get short at the end of the night, but you know, I, I, I envision that all of our liaisons are fully engaged in the committees that they're liaisoning to because again, it's by these committees charter that the planning board is supposed to be a member and participate. And I do want to hear regular reports on this and it can be short, but you know, particularly with the zoning thing. A lot of discussion is that, you know, there isn't a lot of communication, there's maybe not communication between boards and you know, ultimately the planning board is going to have to vet anything that comes out of that, any work product that comes out of that. And I'm going to make sure, you know, for my part, that you guys are fully informed about what's going on. So we'll, we'll discuss this further next week, but thank you for bringing it up. But, so I don't know if the new members have anything to ask. I understand that Carolyn, are you working on some orientation with them? Get them up to speed on the legal parts of it? I and other members will certainly reach out to you about some of the permits and things we've got going on and the regulation you need to be brought up to speed on. But Carolyn, I see your hand up.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman, because I was going to actually offer some, some training because I know that I've been talking with Lauren, I've also been talking with Chris Senior because we're trying to coordinate some more broad trainings, but also when it comes to the planning board, there are things that, you know, it's baptism by fire usually for new members. So I'd like to just extend that I would be happy to do a, a little one-on-one tutorial with, with Deirdre and Kevin if that helps or meet with you both together, however you'd like to do it, if you want to get a lay of the land of, you know, your introduction to zoning with an A and R plan was not exactly an easy entree this evening. There are, you know, there are certainly lots of things that I'd be happy to, happy to sit down and go over if that's helpful, whether we do it, you know, as a group setting or however we do it.
Yeah, I, I'm going to reach out to both of you too, just because we haven't met even. So I want to introduce myself and I can certainly provide some lay of the land, but if the two of you and Lauren and Carolyn can coordinate that, I think you'd really benefit on getting a a quickie orientation on the law. I think my, my, myself and my other two fellow members would be more on the specifics of some of the projects we're better in progress at the moment where we might update you on. But yes, Clark.
Also, there's the Citizen Planner Training Workshop Series. I've, I've probably been to dozens of these over the years and they're really great on uncovering the basics and then dealing with specific questions that we might have that's, that's specifically relevant to Cohasset. But I'm sure when they're become available, Lauren will distribute the, the signup for these workshops.
Yeah, we, we participated in a couple last year. You know, one was about the A and Rs and I think another one, I forget what the other one was. But so Lauren, if there's anything that they can look at retrospectively, you know, retroactively, that's you know, on file or tape or something, you want to share it with them, please do. I think both.
We probably have those materials as well that I could share. So just let me know.
And I think both of you are required to do the open meeting law training that the state provides online. So make sure you get that under your belt fairly quickly. And, you know, the open meeting law is very strict, you know, you need to understand it. One of the things in this day and age is email communication and there are emails about schedulings and things, but we can't talk about substance on emails and that has to be very carefully watched. So take that training as soon as you get, can get to it. So if there's nothing else anyone wants to add, we will meet again next, next Wednesday at six-thirty. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, Clark. Amy, second? Anybody? Second?
I seconded.
Okay, we'll call Clark.
Aye.
Tom Kelly, an aye, Amy.
Amy Glassmore, aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Deirdre?
Aye.
Okay, welcome. All right, so thank you all. Looking at a first smooth night. I hope for the new guys that you are not in shock when you leave here tonight, but we'll see you all next week.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Angela, thank you out there.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night.